All right, we will call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Present.
Commissioner Galt?
Present.
Commissioner Kaler?
Present.
Commissioner Watkins?
Present.
Mayor Paxton?
Present.
As we started last week, we have a guest minister come to our meeting for the blessing. Again, this week, it's Reverend Greg Waldrop. So we'll ask Reverend Waldrop to give the invocation, and we'll ask afterwards Commissioner Watkins to do the pledge of allegiance.
Join me in the prayer. Blessed are you, oh Lord God, creator of the universe, for every good gift you give. We thank you for this city commission and for the city they represent. We thank you for every part of good government. We thank you for every high achieving and excellent department and leader that surrounds this city. We thank you for the organizations and institutions that make up this city, for individuals and families across the city limits. Thank you for every part of this group and organization. We ask you, oh God, to help us see every question in this place in the light of our faith, that we may check in ourselves and in others any passion that may make for violence, any ungenerous judgment, any promptings of arrogance or presumptuous claims. Grant us all insight to recognize the needs and aspirations that brew in us all and remove from us suspicions and misunderstandings, that we may honor all people. Oh Lord, heal our city and strengthen our efforts at being a strong light on the hill for all to see, a place for all to live well and in peace and in harmony. Great God, help us in every decision that's made this day, to see each other and be so bound up in love for each other, that we may feel each other's needs as acutely as we do our own, that we may be with them with sensitivity and understanding and imagination. You bless these who make our representative judgments for us. In your holy name, we pray gladly this holy season. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Reverend Waldrop, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for coming.
Any additions or deletions, Mr. City Manager?
None that I'm aware of.
All right. We have privilege of having the manager of the Paducah Airport, Mr. Richard Roof, to come and give us an update on the airport. So, Richard, welcome to the city commission meeting.
Mayor, Commissioner, thank you for the opportunity to provide you with an update. It's been a little while since we've been down, and there's been a lot of press coverage lately as to whether or not Sky West would be the chosen carrier by the Department of Transportation to continue essential air service at Paducah. So these are all issues that obviously are of concern to the city and as well as the region. So we welcome this opportunity to give you an update. The support from the city and the county over the past few years has been critical in enabling the airport to provide the capacity and the facilities for supporting airlines and general aviation. And in fact, this support's enabled us to reduce our indebtedness by about $600,000 so far to this point, which is good. We're also very proud of our regulatory compliance. We are inspected annually by the FAA on about 164 items. Takes about two days for the inspector to run this inspection, including night work. And we also have inspections by TSA, and there have been no discrepancies, no write-ups, no recommendations now for several years. We're proud of that. On passenger traffic, it's about back to where it was a year ago, following a really disappointing spring, for which we have absolutely no reason at all why things were soft back in the spring. But our aircraft operations have gone the other way. Takeoffs and landings are up by about 18 percent. Should reach about 31,000 to 32,000 aircraft operations sometime by the end of the year. Now, it's interesting on a nationwide basis what's going on with passengers, because that's what drives the airline service. Industry analysts are forecasting no growth, just stagnation nationwide next year, possibly, under the best conditions, a slight increase. And in fact, just before I left the office this evening, came out another news blurb that indicated that nationwide Christmas traffic may be off by about 1 percent. As of right now, our advanced reservations indicate we should be holding last year's numbers, possibly, if we're lucky, a slight increase on it. Now, the issue of Sky West Airlines, which has operated under a subsidy contract for essential air service with the U.S. Department of Transportation for almost two years now. And there's been a lot of concern, inquiries in the press, as to whether Sky West will be here. And I assure you emphatically that they will be here. They're looking forward to another two-year continuance of the contract. The reason this has not been announced has been the problems on the hill that we're all pretty well aware of in terms of budgeting. And it's not that the essential air service program will not be budgeted, it's that it tends to get caught up in larger authorization and appropriations bills, and the outcome of that timeline is yet kind of unclear. So we anticipate something perhaps as early by the end of December, indicating that U.S. DOT has a contract signed with Sky West. And there'll be no change locally. Everything will continue on about the way that it is. Their contract this time will be about $650,000 more than it was the first go-around. And there's some reason for that. Just in the last year, fuel prices have shot up 40 percent, and that is a killer. Surprisingly, those of you who are in business would be astounded to know that the Department of Transportation will only permit a carrier to calculate a 5 percent profit on these routes. Now, that's low, and it's a two-year contract. And look what can happen to your expenses, particularly with fuel, over a two-year contract. So a lot of carriers had their financial lunch eaten by being locked into a two-year contract with a 40 percent hike in fuel prices in the past 12 months. It's an extraordinarily bad situation. There's also increases in non-operating, in operating and non-fuel prices and costs. And then, basically, the industry's faced right now with pretty much stagnant passenger traffic. So it's going to be another challenging year in 2012. Interestingly enough, the Sky West subsidy for each ticket coupon is about $35. Now, let's translate that into, what are we getting for the taxpayers, $35? The first thing that is really interesting is that the EAS subsidies that flow through the Department of Transportation are generated by ticket taxes and by over-flight air-traffic control fees charged by the FAA to foreign air carriers overflying U.S. domestic airspace. So essentially, in terms of general taxation, there is no money going into the essential air service program. It's all paid for by users in the system as it currently exists. Now, Sky West expense to provide two round trips a day to Chicago in a 50-seat jet is right at $13,150 per day. That clock ticks right along. Now, that comes to about $4.8 million in a year. So their total economic impact, and I did a rough calculation, the benefits of having air service at Barclay, which means 120 cars get rented throughout the year and bought new locally throughout the year, you have a payroll associated with not only the airlines, but what the airport has to employ to maintain the qualifications for that service, Transportation Security Administration, and it goes on and on. That's about $30 million a year. So if you do the math on it, we're seeing right at $25 in local economic benefit to the region for every $1 that it costs for that essential air service subsidy. And you've heard these worst stories, particularly in Reed's home state of Nevada, to where that equivalent subsidy may well be $2,000 to $3,000 per ticket. And that's a problem in that particular area, but here, it's quite reasonable. So let's look at where we've gone in terms of the air service locally. We've got some improvements that have happened since Sky West instituted service. We have lost connecting potential in St. Louis, Cincinnati, Memphis, and Nashville, as the major air carriers have basically de-hubbed or de-emphasized these cities. Memphis is in the process of being shrunk down. At an air service conference that my director of marketing went to in Memphis a couple of weeks back, the question was asked to a vice president of one of the carriers that feeds Delta at Memphis, what's the status of the Memphis airport? And the VP grinned and said, "Well, you know FedEx is our number-one carrier at Memphis, and without FedEx, what would Memphis be?" Shreveport. So that gives you some idea of the impact. St. Louis has been de-hubbed by American. Cincinnati has lost Delta service to an extent that two of the three concourses are now shuttered and may be torn down. American left Nashville, basically, as a hub in 1995, and as I just mentioned, Memphis is taking some pretty severe knocks from Delta. If we look around us at Cape Girardeau, Marion, Illinois, Jackson, Tennessee, Owensboro, Kentucky, their essential air service now is a nine-seat airplane. And in two cases, it's a single-engine, nine-seat airplane. And we're upgraded to a 50-seat jet. So that is something to be appreciative of. Sky West, by the way, by most standards, is the eighth-largest airline in the United States. Carries more passengers than JetBlue. Sizable operation. They have bought Atlantic Southeast and Express Jet, so they're now running out of about five to six hubs with a total fleet of almost 700 aircraft. It's a gigantic operation. Now, a regional carrier affiliated with a large carrier has two ways of doing this. They can be on a contract, which means, basically, the major carrier is paying the regional partner a certain number of dollars per flight leg, and is also picking up the fuel tab. The benefits for the major carrier is the major carrier collects all of the revenue. Money goes straight to the major carrier, not to the regional partner. And hence, the major carrier has the capability of reacting to fare changes in a competitive situation. The reverse is, you can have an at-risk market, where the regional partner and the major carrier will split, in some fashion, a fare. Like, for instance, between here and Seattle, it would be split between Sky West and then United Airlines. The advantage to this is, for Paducah, which is an at-risk market, is that Sky West has skin in this game. Northwest, when they were here flying to Memphis, was a contract station. It made no difference at all to Northwest Airlink whether there was a single passenger on that airplane or not. That was big Northwest problem. But here, Sky West carries considerably, whether or not there are passengers on the airplane, because they're getting a certain percentage of that fare. So they have to be competitive, they have to help us market, and they have to be involved in the community, which Sky West certainly has done. Now, those are the good things about the existing situation. On the neutral point, flight reliability. It's really been about the same in terms of canceled flights. Sky West regional jets have a slightly better maintenance record in terms of flight cancellations than did the turboprops that Northwest Airlink had. But on the other hand, as we well know, and one of the few disadvantages to Chicago O'Hare is the air traffic situation and weather at Chicago compared to Memphis. So, but those two balance themselves out, so the reliability rate's been about the same. The disadvantages, again, have been weather in Chicago and the fact that United's connecting system out of Chicago is relatively weak to the south and southeast, which means that we've lost some of the desirability for leisure travelers into the Orlando area or other Gulf cities that would normally receive a fair amount of traffic. Now, what does it take to get additional service? We're looking at a 75 percent load factor for break-even. That means, without subsidy, Sky West would need to see 37 and 1/2 passengers per departure for break-even analysis. When we had Northwest Airlink here with a 33-seat sub, that was considerably less, about 24 and 1/2 passengers, which means for us to be able to generate enough traffic to acquire the third-round trip, we've got to generate over 12 additional passengers. And that's a bit tough. If we go back 20 years ago, when we had 19-seat turboprops, 12 and 1/2 passengers was a nice break-even load factor just on a turboprop. So that's our main striving for 2012, is to get that passenger traffic back up to where we can begin to look at a situation where Sky West would consider adding the third flight. So I have left, you have available for you, our fiscal year 2011 audit. Two comments on that. It's unqualified. There are no question to cost, no question revenues. The second point is that because we receive FAA and state aviation grants for improvement of the facility, this audit is considered, in the vernacular of the accountant, to be a single-stage audit, which means it covers everything. Not only operations, but our compliance with the numerous regulations by FAA and the state for handling grant money. None of the grant costs or expenses or revenues from the grants have been questioned either. So you have a very clean audit, totally unqualified. So I thank you for your time. We probably need to get back to you a little bit more often than about every year, but we appreciate the opportunity to give you an update and any questions?
Yeah. Commissioner. Yeah, Richard, thank you for that information. I appreciate that. Love having Sky West here. How many, what's the average seats that we have right now of those 50-seat jets you said it'd take?
For the year, we're going to run about 50. And had it not been, well, 50 seats in the aircraft, 50 percent load factor, slightly above that for the year, so it'll be somewhere about 25 and 1/2 passengers per departure.
Oh, okay. All right. And did you know how many, if any, cancellations we had last winter because of weather in Chicago?
I would have to go back and check the records on that. So far to date, there have been a total of 28 cancellations, and of that, there have been a very few of those that are considered controllable, which means the cancellation was due to a problem that the air carrier had control over, i.e. a maintenance problem or a crew shortage. The others being uncontrollable, which will be weather or air-traffic control in Chicago.
Okay.
So 28 is the total for the year so far, which leaves us only, I think, about a 4 percent cancellation rate for everything.
4 percent. Wow, that's excellent. So the weather hadn't been the factor that some people thought it would be as far as...
Not too bad. The problem with Chicago, again, is they've had fantastic snow removal, as they would have to have. But you begin to close a couple of runways for snow removal, and then air traffic begins to back up a little bit. And it's really interesting, if you were to follow the tracks of the Sky West aircraft, for instance, like the one this afternoon that left to go back to Chicago, the route of flight to get into the arrival corridors at Chicago dictates that this aircraft actually leaves here on a northwest heading, skims over St. Louis and over Moline, and then fits into a gateway for O'Hare. So you're actually looking at probably about 40 to 50 extra miles put on that route segment just to fit into the air-traffic control system, which goes back to my point of why Sky West needed additional subsidy, not only here, but in numerous other of their subsidized markets, because of the inefficiency of the air-traffic control system. They're putting a lot of time and miles on.
Is that all your questions, Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
Anybody else have any comments or questions for Richard? Richard, you're doing a great job, and we're lucky to have that airport. Hopefully, we could, we can get a third flight. That's what we need to be striving for, but we'll take what we can get right now. So keep up the good work. You've got a great board. I know you enjoy working with that board, and let's just keep trying to make it bigger and better.
We will do our best to be there.
Thanks. Thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
Okay. All right.
I move that the reading of the minutes for December 13, 2011, meeting be waived and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the city clerk be approved as written.
Second.
Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Kaler?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye.
Motion, Commissioner Galt?
I move that the following documents be received and filed: documents, certificates of insurance, contracts and agreements, Brook Stadium Commission for repairs to Brook Stadium due to vandalism, Josh Goodwin Farm lease for property located at Sheam Bridge Road, also known as Lindsey Farm, and the Commonwealth of Kentucky McCracken Circuit Court stipulated judgment for firefighter unpaid wages lawsuit.
Second.
Okay. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Kaler?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye.
We have some resolutions. First one, Commissioner Kaler?
I move that a resolution entitled "A Resolution of the City of Paducah Supporting the Recommendation of the Historical and Architectural Review Commission Nominating the Wallace Park Neighborhood to the National Register of Historic Places" be adopted.
Second.
Okay. Steve, what you got?
Good evening. Right now, currently in the city of Paducah, we have four districts on the national register. This would be the fifth. This nomination actually originated with the Wallace Park residents. We've held a public hearing with the Historical and Architecture Review Commission. Additionally, the neighborhood has had a hearing on this, with a recommendation from the city commission. The Kentucky Heritage Council in January will make a recommendation to the National Park Service, so...
Okay.
Some people may ask a question also, you know, what does this do for the community? Well, one thing it does do is allow the property owners to take advantage of some tax credits, so that's obviously important.
Any questions for Steve?
And is it also a protection?
Not right now. Only two of the districts in the city of Paducah have additional overlay type of protection, and that's Lower Town and then the Market House Historic District. This would only be registered on the national register, but with no protection, similar to Jefferson Street.
Okay. Any other questions? Great. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Kaler?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. After last week's commission meeting, I went to Paducah Tillman High School for the meeting held sponsored by the United States Postal Service concerning the closing of the USPS's Paducah processing facility here across the street. And if this is closed, that's going, costs 44 jobs for people working out of Paducah that average $50,000 a year. And the support jobs that will also be adversely affected. I haven't seen a study. I did one concerning another facility. It said for every 10 loss, six additional support jobs would be lost. But I do know that a number of support jobs would be lost if the processing facility in Paducah were closed. It would certainly adversely affect the local newspaper here. Because the 420 ZIP code would not have same-day mail service, it would stretch to two and possibly three days, which means that probably people don't want a newspaper or certain other advertisements, and mail would become irrelevant. And so those supportive jobs would be lost likewise. So I think it would be good for the city of Paducah to us, the commission, the mayor, to support and pass a resolution urging the United States Postal Service to look at other ways of trying to, I know they have a $6 billion a year deficit, but the postal service wasn't established as a profit-making entity. It's a service. And the federal government is in the hole in so many different areas to, you know, single out the postal service and say, "Hey, you're going to have to balance your budget. You're going to have to make a profit." If they go through what they're planning on doing to balance the budget, it's going to do irreparable harm to the postal service. And I think it would just have a negative impact that even more jobs and more closures would happen on down the road, because if you do things to create savings that lessens your business activity and your revenue goes down, then you've got to do more things to cut expenditures, and so your service continues to get cut back further and further. So I think it's a downward spiral that doesn't need to begin. So here's this resolution. "A Resolution of the City of Paducah, Kentucky Against the United States Postal Service Closing of the Paducah Processing Facility. Whereas the U.S. Postal Service has announced potential plans to close the Paducah Processing Facility, and whereas the city of Paducah believes protecting local jobs is a responsibility of the municipality, and whereas the U.S. Postal Service was established under provisions of the U.S. Constitution and is charged to provide a range of products, access to services and facilities, delivery frequency, affordable and uniform pricing, service quality, and security of the mail, and whereas the U.S. Postal Service has failed to do an economic impact study to assess the result of closing the facility on the local economy, and whereas the loss of 44 jobs that pay an annual average salary of $50,000 will have a significant negative impact, not only on the local community, but also a number of other businesses which are dependent upon the postal service facility for their livelihood, and whereas the city of Paducah believes that closing the facility will greatly affect the quality of service and increase the delivery time currently provided by the U.S. Postal Service, with a result in a decline in the sustainability of the U.S. Postal Service, and whereas the city believes the U.S. Postal Service should look at other alternatives, including Congress, for closing the budget deficit. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah, that the city of Paducah stands firmly opposed and strongly against the closing of the United States Postal Service Paducah Processing Facility, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its adoption."
All right. You seconded. Where are they on this whole process, Commissioner?
Well, unless Congress intervenes, the decision's basically been made, but they have until, I think it's May, before it actually will go into effect. So they have, we have between now and about the 1st of May to try to change the minds of the postmaster general and Congress. And so 22 U.S. senators have signed on a resolution urging the postal service not to close these. I think it's, what is it, 240-some-odd processing facilities like Paducah across the country. And it's going to cost thousands of jobs in an effort to try to balance the budget. So more House members and senators are signing on. I hope enough, a majority do, between now and the 1st of May, to try to stop this move that would really just gut the U.S. Postal Service.
Any other questions for Commissioner Watkins?
The, you know, the folks that I've talked to about this and encourage people to attend that meeting that night, most of them had the opinion that we should do away with Saturday delivery to balance.
I think there are ways and things, and that would be one option. If they need to lower employees, they could do it through attrition. But they've got a six-year contract across the street at $850,000 a year rent that they are still going to be stuck with, even if they close the facility. So it doesn't make much sense. The savings are going to be minimal by the time they add everything up. And so I think there's other ways, and frankly, Congress can, again, it's not a profit-making entity. Amtrak isn't. TVA isn't. So it's a government corporation, and it's, it needs government subsidies occasionally, so...
Good. Good. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Kaler?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye.
Thank you. Go to municipal orders. Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky Approving the Inter-local Agreement Between the City of Paducah, Kentucky Fire Department, Concord Fire Protection District." Reeland Farley...
[inaudible]
Erase all of that. You guys are taking notes. Upon the recommendation of the city manager, the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah ordered that the personnel changes on the attached list be approved.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Cindy, any comments you'd like to make or...
I don't have any comments, Mayor.
Any questions for Cindy Medford on this?
No.
Okay. Pretty self-explanatory. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Kaler?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
I move that a municipal order entitled "A Municipal Order..." I move that a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Amending the Fiscal Year 2011-2012 Pay Grade Schedule for the City of Paducah Employees by Abolishing Positions Within the Paducah Renaissance Alliance and Finance Departments and Creating Positions Within the Paducah Renaissance Alliance Department," be adopted.
Second.
Okay. Any questions for Cindy Onette? Pretty self-explanatory. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Gault.
Aye.
Mr. Kahler.
Aye.
Mr. Watkins.
Aye.
Mayor Paxton.
Aye. Commissioner Kahler.
I move that a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Amending Sections B Finance, D Information Technology, E Inspection, F Planning, G Police, H Fire, I Engineering Public Works, J Park Services, and L Paducah Renaissance Alliance of the FY 2011-2012 Position and Pay Schedule for the Employees of the City of Paducah, Kentucky," be adopted.
Second.
Any comments from Cindy or the city manager on this?
These are position and pay tables that we just clean up every couple of months for your review and approval.
Any questions?
No questions, sir.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Gault.
Aye.
Mr. Kahler.
Aye.
Mr. Watkins.
Aye.
Mayor Paxton.
Aye. Okay, thank you Cindy. Ordinances and adoptions. Again, we have talked about these and we go through these fairly quickly. So we'll start with Commissioner Watkins.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, Approving and Authorizing the Execution of Interlocal Cooperative Agreement Among the City of Paducah, Kentucky and the Members of the MAP GIS Consortium for the Acquisition and Administration of ESRI Multi-Jurisdictional Enterprise License. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance further authorizes and directs the mayor to enter into and execute an interlocal cooperative agreement with the other members of the MAP GIS Consortium, McCracken County Paducah Water, Paducah Power, Paducah McCracken County Emergency Communication Service Board, and Paducah McCracken County Joint Sewer Agency, and any and all other documents which may reasonably be necessary to comply with the terms and conditions of the aforementioned interlocal cooperative agreement so that the members of the MAP GIS Consortium may join together to enter into an Environmental Systems Research Institute, Inc., ESRI Multi-Jurisdictional Enterprise License Agreement for the right of all members to use, deploy, and administer certain ESRI software license."
Second.
Okay, any questions? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Gault.
Aye.
Mr. Kahler.
Aye.
Mr. Watkins.
Aye.
Mayor Paxton.
Aye. Mr. Abraham.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky Approving the Interlocal Agreement Between the City of Paducah, Kentucky Fire Department, Concord Fire Protection District, Reeland Farley Fire District, Hindren Fire District, Lone Oak Fire District, West McCracken Fire District, and Barclay Regional Airport Authority Establishing an Automatic Mutual Aid in the Event of a Fire Rescue Emergency. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the city and the fire district hereby enter into an agreement to coordinate automatic mutual aid with all other parties in their respective jurisdictions in order to maximize the fire suppression efficiency of equipment, I'm sorry, effectiveness of equipment and personnel resource of all parties heretofore and to protect the lives and property of the citizens in the parties' respective jurisdiction. This agreement will govern the responsibilities of parties within whose jurisdiction an alarm occurs and those parties responding to an alarm outside their jurisdiction. This agreement shall remain in full force and effect for a period beginning on the effective date of the agreement and ending on January 1st, 2013. Unless notice of termination is given at least ninety days before January 1st, 2013, the agreement shall automatically renew for an unlimited number of successive one-year renewal terms."
Second.
Pretty common neighbors helping neighbors, and it's a great way to keep people safe. So it's a great mutual aid agreement. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Gault.
Aye.
Mr. Kahler.
Aye.
Mr. Watkins.
Aye.
Mayor Paxton.
Aye. Mr. Gault.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Revising and Creating a New Section in Chapter 126, Zoning Article III of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Pretending to Homeless Shelters. This ordinance is summarized as follows. Revising and creating a new section in Chapter 126, Zoning Article III, Section 72 of the Paducah Code of Ordinances to establish regulations for the location of homeless shelters in the R3, R4, B1, B3, M1, M2, and M3 zones to include minimizing land use conflicts and ensuring that there are adequate services for homeless individuals within the vicinity of the shelter."
Second.
Okay, any questions? City manager, do you have any comments to make at this time?
Well, I think this would be appropriate time to comment on progress with respect to the Tent City relocation. That's been in process for a week. Spoke with Michelle Thomas late this afternoon and happy to report that as of noon tomorrow, there will no longer be any residents at Tent City of those that were there a week ago or might have entered during that time. And I think this is, it certainly bears stating publicly that Michelle's good efforts here, Michelle Thomas, have helped bring this about. And I think there have been other resources in the community that have been brought to the effort. So it's quite a statement, I think, on behalf of the community and its compassion and its resourcefulness there. Might mention that Michelle's requested a little bit more time to remove some personal property there. So we've granted a week for that and she's sure that it'll be able to be done probably in a lot less time. Nonetheless, we've granted an additional week for property to be removed. So I think that that underscores the importance and the significance of the homeless shelter ordinance that is in process that you passed on first reading last meeting and are considering tonight. Michelle and many others have stated both publicly and privately that that is a goal, is to affect a more permanent shelter, if you will, for people in need. And that's what this ordinance is envisioned to provide the structure, the framework for. So hopefully, something will come about in relative short time in terms of an effort to get that done. We're not sure exactly at this time where that might come from or where the resources or the sponsorship might come from. But I think the effort of the community in the last week would be indicative that there are those things in place. And it's probably a matter of bringing them together and affecting some coordination and so on and so forth. So I think even though it's been a difficult thing for many people in the last week, I think Michelle made a statement that was very profound, and that is that there's something better to come about. And I think we have more clarity on that today than we might have a week ago. So I encourage the commission to pass this ordinance on second reading. Could she?
Yes. Michelle, would you like to say anything at this time or you don't certainly have to?
People at home can't hear you.
Okay, I just did not see this agenda action form where, and this is no problem necessarily. Approval of this ordinance does not grant the property owner at 1227 Tennessee Street permission to utilize the structure as a homeless shelter. So that's just the structure as it is now. That's not, that doesn't mean we can never have one right there.
This ordinance is not particular to any piece of property, other than the zoning portion of it.
Okay.
That's just in there.
Yes, I just had a question on that, and that I don't think has, we'll still be able to work together and figure out how to move forward with the whole plan.
I think that's our.
Cooperatively, I think.
Anybody that comes forward.
To the best, to the best use for the community.
Michelle, if I could, while you're there, ask you a couple of questions. I know you've got a lot of public support and you're named off, including our church, about fifteen churches that have been helpful and continue to do so. And just an outpouring of support from people in this community, and this is a very compassionate community. And if any of the lumber companies wanted to donate lumber, building materials, if any of the labor unions or just any skilled person wanted to, or unskilled, wanted to donate labor to perhaps build a permanent structure for the homeless in Paducah. And again, you know, we own probably sixty-plus pieces of parcels of land that perhaps one of them might be ideal for a new facility that we could perhaps donate to the cause. Is there an address, a phone, or a number or something that people could get ahold of you if they do wish to donate?
At this time, since we don't have a permanent office, they're just using my cellphone, which is 270-331-2187. That could backfire on me. Business only, please, before 8:00 PM, thank you.
I think Commissioner Watkins, you know, I think now that we're through, we've got the Tent City resolved and we've approved this ordinance, I think several of us need to sit down and come up with a plan on where we go with this homeless shelter. And Michelle has graciously offered to participate in that. And I'm sure all of us have gotten calls, people wanting to help. I've been, I've had my share of calls of people who want to help, give money. So we need to sit down with Michelle's assistance and come up with a plan. So I would urge the people who want to donate to give that process a little bit of time because we don't know for sure what we actually need.
Yes, sir, mayor. And we absolutely need to make, really, we've got a clean slate to work with now since the ordinance is passed. We do, if they are interested in helping Tent City missions, that one in particular, we do have a bank account set up in that name at First National Bank where they can donate monetary. And then as far as supplies, we will be having a meeting with the board members in the morning to maybe, you know, decide what direction we want to go now that this has been, well, hopefully has been passed and we can move forward. And then I believe we were discussing meeting with the city planners and zoners to make sure all the kinks are ironed out before we go forward and everybody's on the same page, working together, city and community. And the community has been an incredible help, and we would like to thank the community.
So currently, you are set up to take monetary donations and?
Yes, ma'am.
Supplies.
Monetary, yes. As far as lumber and that type of supplies, I don't really have any kind of storage for that yet. But hopefully, we'll get to moving on this quickly with the cooperation of the city.
But you certainly could take promise.
Oh, absolutely, we could take promise. So that would be good.
I also want to commend Michelle. She's been very easy to work with. She does what she says she's going to do. And I think we've built up a certain amount of trust in our relationship. And now we've got to do the things that the community needs to do.
Absolutely.
Look forward to working with you.
Thank you, mayor. Appreciate it.
If I may, our policy prior to this ordinance being passed, our policy infrastructure was lacking in this area. And now that this is being addressed, it'd be interesting to see what happens from this point on. What doors by this elective body putting in place this, the regulations to create homeless shelters within the city of Paducah, to see what happens from this point. Because prior to this, it was, you pretty much was, couldn't do anything.
Exactly.
And that's not good.
Right.
So I'd love to see, and you'll probably get a lot more interest in doing something like this now that the regulations are in place. So this was a good thing.
Absolutely. Thank you all for your help and support.
Thank you, Michelle, appreciate it. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Gault.
Aye.
Mr. Kahler.
Aye.
Mr. Watkins.
Aye.
Mayor Paxton.
Aye. Mr. Kahler.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Extending the Boundary of the City of Paducah, Kentucky by Finalizing the Annexation of Certain Properties Lying Adjacent to the Corporate Limits of the City of Paducah and Defining Accurately the Boundary of Said Property to Be Included Within the Said Corporate Limits. This ordinance is summarized as follows. Approving Final Annexation of Attractive Property Contiguous to the Present City Limits Located at 156 Bleach Road Containing 3.5 Acres."
Second.
Okay, reminder, this is a consensual annexation. And so I think it's good for the parties that have asked for it. So with that, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Gault.
Aye.
Mr. Kahler.
Aye.
Mr. Watkins.
Aye.
Mayor Paxton.
Aye. Mr. Watkins.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Purchase of a 2012 Ford F-150 Truck for the City of Paducah's Engineering Public Works Department, Maintenance Division, in Compliance with a Kentucky State Purchasing Contract. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The Finance Director is authorized to pay the total sum of $23,186.40 to Paul Miller Ford, Inc., for the purchase of a 2012 Ford F-150 truck for the City of Paducah's Engineering Public Works Department, Maintenance Division, in compliance with a Kentucky State Purchasing Contract."
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Gault.
Aye.
Mr. Kahler.
Aye.
Mr. Watkins.
Aye.
Mayor Paxton.
Aye. Seems like the press, since there's no controversy, that the press is leaving. So it's kind of an interesting situation. Oh, you are still here.
Yeah, we got the two prize reporters here.
Okay. Just TV press. All right. Where am I? Is it, am I the U, Commissioner Abraham?
You started that.
I knew I was going to regret it too.
I got you. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Repealing in Its Entirety, Ordinance Number 75-51127, Which Authorizes the Closing of an Alley From the South Line of Kentucky Avenue to the North Line of Washington Street Near 17th Street in Paducah, Kentucky, and Clarifying that the aforementioned alley is a public right-of-way of the City of Paducah. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That by the enactment of this ordinance, the Board of Commission is hereby repeals in its entirety ordinance number 75-51127, Which Authorizes the Closing of a fore-said alley and clarifies that the aforementioned alley is a public right-of-way of the City of Paducah, Kentucky."
Second.
Okay, we all know what this is about. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Gault.
Aye.
Mr. Kahler.
Aye.
Mr. Watkins.
Aye.
Mayor Paxton.
Aye. Mr. Gault.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute an Addendum to the Agreement to Employ Jeffrey A. Peterson as Paducah City Manager. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The city hereby approves an addendum to the employment agreement with Jeffrey Peterson and authorizes the mayor to execute said addendum. The changes are as follows. Reflect a 1% salary increase effective July 2nd, 2001. amend terms of payment into the city manager's deferred compensation plan and extend the residency requirement from twelve to fourteen months."
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Gault.
Aye.
Mr. Kahler.
Aye.
Mr. Watkins.
Aye.
Mayor Paxton.
Aye. Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Then we'll go right in and let him earn his pay now with his report.
Okay.
A 1% raise.
The county, I believe, last night took action to support the mutual amendment towards the Paducah Power Bill for the. the Paducah Power Bill for the convention center. So I think the mechanics of that will be that the county will pay that directly and will reimburse the county. So we'll have an action on the next two agendas to authorize the drawing of that from your contingency fund.
So they'll pay the entire amount, and then we'll reimburse them? Is that the way?
Right, that's, Deputy Judge Harness indicated that's probably the easiest thing to do for them and us as well. So the negotiating team that has been put in place for negotiations with the American Federation of State County Municipal Employees Local has had a couple of meetings, and will have a third soon, preparing for the commencement of negotiations, I believe, on the 14th of January. So I believe that the 10th meeting of the City Commission will be with you, an executive session, to discuss that with you and our strategy going into those. So we look forward to a constructive negotiation, and hopefully one that concludes in a fairly, in an orderly process. And as well, on the 10th of January, the next business meeting, we will hear the first reading of an ordinance to amend the ordinance that defines the powers and authority of the Board of Directors of Paducah Renaissance Alliance. So that's the looking ahead a bit.
Good. All right, Commissioner comments?
Well, I'd like to say, you know, I appreciate Richard coming here tonight and explaining what's going on with the airport. It is funded partially by the City of Paducah, and I think that other boards that are funded by the city should also come and explain what they've been doing. I think that would be a good thing to do yearly. And I would especially like to request Paducah Area Transit System to come to the City Commission and talk about their operations and some of the issues that are occurring in our community right now due to some efficiency cuts that they've put in place that are causing hardships on people that have to travel to the mall to work.
I've received several phone calls about that, and I know the other commissioners have too, and I've talked to the city manager about that. Because I guess their buses are now running only eight to five. And I understand that it's because their ridership is down, but I think that's really creating a hardship for people that have to go to work and be there at 8:00, and so...
I think the riders are down, and their funding is down. Chip Cox, their chairman, he and I have been missing phone calls here. He's been trying to get ahold of me. So I think it's a good comment to, right after the first of the year, maybe get them to the meeting and have them kind of answer any questions.
Yeah, it's a tough issue. The city maintained its funding level from the previous year, although I think we reduced it 25,000 years ago. That's, I think we're at 2 and 1/4, right about that. And I believe this year, the county was unable to provide subsidy. So their support revenue has decreased, and it has created some real challenges. I'm not sure what all the issues are in the state and federal level. But clearly, when a revenue stream goes down, decisions have to be made on the other side of that for how they can deal with it. And I think that you correctly categorize that mayor as an efficiency move. And where that kind of an operation is concerned, ridership is the indicator, I guess, of where, where, I guess you can address things from the expense side. So we'll get him before you and hear the story.
Good.
Yeah, I think that would be, that would be an excellent...
And I would also like to say that our Lower Town Neighborhood Association, since we do accept money for the festival, the art festival, we are having an audit done, and I think they would also like to come and present that audit. I think anyone that accepts money from us should have their audit and present a report to us.
We used to, through the six-month period, right around that time, have people come and do. If we were doing a contract for services with them, they would come. And I don't know if that's something we want to go back and think about doing or not, have them kind of present where the money's being spent, and kind of an update about midway through the contract.
Increase transparency in government to have that done.
Agreed.
You think that'd be a good idea?
I do, but...
I think it would be, I think that would be appropriate.
Public comments. All right, Ms. Kahler?
And I just want to say that, you know, every year, or the last three years, we've had this tradition, the last meeting before Christmas, to don our Christmas hats. And I would like to say that Scrooge is not alive in City Hall, and I think we've proved that today with the work that we've done with all the departments and with the work that Michelle has done with the City of Paducah, and cooperated very well. So Scrooge is dead. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, everybody. Especially David Cox.
Chief, this doesn't look as good as those Christmas cards from PD.
Oh, they were great.
Weren't they great?
They were fantastic.
They were great.
They were fantastic.
All right, if there's no further business, we are adjourned.